Welcome. This is the September fifteenth meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, September nineteenth, 2025. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, September nineteenth, 2025, the date a certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory fifteen-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, October fifth, 2025. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. Voting tonight is Bob Gross, Tom Wolfher, Bob Prentice, Ray Rice, and myself, Joe Rusick. The first application we're going to hear is application twenty-five dash zero-two-two, a variance request for Saint-Hilaire for fifteen Gaylord Farm Road. Mr. Prentice, could you please read the staff comments?
Okay. Number one is twenty-five dash zero-two-two. Variance request, side yards, Saint-Hilaire slash fifteen Gaylord Farm Road. Applicant seeks variance approval for side yard of twenty-one point five feet, where thirty feet is required, and twenty-one point five feet exist to construct a dormer slash vertical expansion along the rear expanse of the dwelling at fifteen Gaylord Farm Road in an RU forty district. The property and the dwelling predate the inception of zoning. Property is over three acres, yet the buildings are located along and within the western side yard. The applicant is proposing a vertical addition to the structure with no change to the footprint necessitating variance approval to expand a non-conformity.
Thank you. We also have two letters, one dated June thirtieth, 2025, and the other one dated July sixteenth, 2025. Welcome. Pull the microphones nice and close to you, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Shannon Saint-Hilaire, fifteen Gaylord Farm Road.
Ken Welch, twenty-one Pleasant Street.
Okay, please explain your application.
My application is to add a dormer to the back of the house and going, not changing the footprint at all, just going straight up for an additional bathroom and expanding the master bedroom and the other bedroom in the dormer.
So it's a vertical expansion, you're not changing the footprint at all?
Not at all.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions for the applicant?
No.
Mr. Gross?
No, I, it's, I saw-
Are you reserving your time?
No, I'm reserving it for later. I saw it, it's fine.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against the application? Hearing, seeing none? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No.
I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the variance request for side yard of twenty-one point five feet to construct a vertical addition at fifteen Gaylord Farm Road as shown on zoning location survey, land of Shanahan M. St. Clair, dated seven-three, two thousand twenty-five, and submitted plans received July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Rusick.
Yes. Your application has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep. The next application is twenty-five dash zero-two-three, a special exception request for Katrona at one-thirty-four Chimney Hill Road. Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I do. Number two is twenty-five dash zero-two-three, special exception request slash garage area slash Katrona slash one-thirty-four Chimney Hill Road. Applicant seeks garage area of two thousand one hundred and seven square feet, where nine hundred and twenty-four square feet exist and one thousand six hundred square feet is permitted to erect an eleven hun- one thousand one hundred and eighty-three square foot detached garage at one-thirty-four Chimney Hill Road in an RU dash forty district. Parcel is a six-point-eight-seven acre rear lot with a dwelling of plus or minus thirty-two hundred square feet. Special exception request is for five hundred and seven square feet of garage area more than what is permitted as of right. Proposed detached garage is located compliantly well within all required setbacks, within maximum height allowance, and not visible from the street line.
Thank you. Welcome. Pull the microphone nice and close to you.
Don Katrona, one-thirty-four Chimney Hill.
Okay, please explain your application here.
I want to build this pole barn garage, store my tractors and implements, move my wood shop out of the basement, and have general storage for the wife and I.
Okay. So a couple of questions, not going to do any commercial work.
No, I'm done. I recently retired, done with all that.
Okay, so this is going to be a storage and a shop area?
Yeah, yeah, basically.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Hi.
How you doing? Just what are the other garages used for then?
The ones that existing now?
Yes.
Are for motor vehicles.
So they're all full with motor vehicles?
Yeah. And a lot of the things I want to put in this proposed building.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Wolfher, you good? Is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none? Anything further you'd like to add?
That's it.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, making motion, special exception request for total garage area of twenty-one hundred and seven feet to construct a eleven hundred and eighty-three square foot detached garage at one-thirty-four Chimney Hill Road as shown on site plan prepared for Donald Katona, one-thirty-four Chimney Hill Road dated seven-twenty-two, two-oh-two-five, and submitted plans received seven-twenty-three, two-oh-two-five, and it was modified August eighth, two thousand two-five, subject to comments from the Health Department dated eight-twenty-six, twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Ah, yes, approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Rusick.
Yes. Your special exception has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you much. Have a great evening.
Enjoy it. The next variance request is twenty-five dash zero-two-four, variance request for Landino at eight-sixty-nine North Farms Road. Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes. Number three is twenty-five dash zero-two-four, variance request, rear lot area, Landino slash eight-sixty-nine North Farms Road. Applicant requests variance approval for rear lot area of forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four square feet, where sixty-two thousand five hundred square feet is required to divide the two-point-three-three acre lot at eight-sixty-nine North Farms Road in an RU forty district. Parcel was a forty thousand twenty-eight square foot compliant lot in nineteen eighty-eight. In nineteen eighty-eight, North Farms Estates subdivision proposed a new lot of plus forty thousand square feet of budding to the rear. Resubdivision of North Farms Estates nineteen ninety-one transferred sixty-one thousand five hundred sixty-seven square feet of the nineteen eighty-eight subdivision land, including the nineteen eighty-eight abutting rear lot to eight-sixty-nine North Farms Road, creating the current lot as a single two-point-three-three lot. Applicant proposes a lot split of the two-point-three-three acre lot, creating a rear lot. Rear lot regulations require more than the required forty thousand square feet lot area for the RU forty zone, has to be sixty-two thousand five hundred square feet. Area of accessway must be deducted from this requirement. Rear lot proposed equals a plus or minus fifty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-four square feet less accessway of plus or minus eight thousand nine hundred seventy square feet, equals rear lot area of plus or minus forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four square feet. Rear lot still has ample area for a non-rear lot located in this zone.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Giovanni Landino, eight-sixty-nine North Farms Road.
Okay. Explain your application, what's going on.
Uh, my parents bought their first lot, which eight-sixty-nine is currently on, and then a few years later, they bought the rear lot that has its own accessway. In the future, if my sister and I ever wanted to build a house, which we're considering, the, the whole goal is that I want to build the house back there with an-in-law for my parents, so when they get older, it's all one level, as well as for me, so it makes it easier. We're trying to think about a little bit of the future. And, you know, when we started looking around at this and we didn't, we knew that we had to go for variance, but we didn't know that it was that much extra land that you needed.
Right.
So when we were toying with the idea, we just, you know, that's what we're looking to do. I, I know the distances from the other houses are, the closest one is our house, which is a hundred and sixty feet away. The furthest is four hundred and fifty feet, so there's a lot of extra space between the houses, and the way the shape of the land is, where we would build it, there's a lot of room. So we're kind of hoping that we can build back there.
Okay. Amy, can you give us more of an explanation on how and why we're doing this?
I can give you the history, and it was quite interesting to compile, and you were provided most of it in your packet. As my comments said, the original lot was a standard forty thousand plus square foot lot for the RU forty district, and the subdivision came later. Let me see which my order here. In nineteen eighty-eight, subdivision was proposed and approved, which included an as-yet addressed lot, exactly budding the rear of forty thousand square feet with its own access. They resubdivided that subdivision in nineteen ninety-one, create, no longer having this lot abutting the rear, just excess land, and excess land along the side of eight-sixty-nine North Farms. It would have been landlocked, it would have had no access as part of the subdivision, so they sold or transferred that, those two little pieces of property to eight-sixty-nine North Farms, creating a larger lot, because it would have been useless land with the resubdivision. So now here we are, there is, an accessway needs to be twenty-five feet wide off of a street for a rear lot, which this has more than ample. We have to deduct that area, as I mentioned in my comments, from the area of the rear lot, but unfortunately, our regulations today require fifty percent again of lot area for the zone if it's a rear lot. So he, they don't have the fifty percent more, but they certainly have ample for the zone, and something could be erected there quite easily with complacency, with setbacks and such, and have access to North Farms Road.
Right, because so you're saying it does have its own driveway or access?
The accessway would be, yes, it would be along the side, the entire length of the property from eight-sixty-nine from North Farms to the back.
Okay.
And it's, forgive me, because I don't have my magnifying glass with me, but I believe it was more than thirty feet wide, that strip.
Yes, it's thirty feet.
And it needs to be twenty-five, so he's got more than enough.
Right.
So.
So the driveway is right alongside your driveway?
Yes, the accessway is in between eight-sixty-one and eight-sixty-nine.
So it's, so it'll-
So it's separate, it's not a shared?
Yeah, so if you're looking down, your driveway is to the left of your driveway would be the one to the back?
Yes, it'd go up to the back, right, and there is over fifty thousand square feet, including the accessway, but once you deduct that area, it still has over forty thousand square feet.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody got any more questions for Amy while she's?
Yeah, so was this, Amy then, was this sold as, this wasn't sold as a buildable lot? This was sold as just some piecemeal?
They transferred just some excess land from the subdivision to the, to eight-sixty-nine because it was useless for the subdivision at that point with their resubdivision criteria.
So then it became part of eight-sixty-nine, it's not, it took on that address?
It added to eight-sixty-nine, correct.
Added that address. It's not a separate address then?
Not, not until and unless you approve the-
No, I understand that, but right now it's not a separate lot.
Yes.
So your family bought this lot as understanding that it was adding land and buffer to your property?
So originally, the developers for the Far Horizon were going to come down between eight-sixty-one and eight-sixty-nine. That accessway, when it was sixty feet, they were going to bring the main road coming down that way. Then they decided to go a different route off of sixty-eight where the old fire, volunteer firehouse used to be. Then they changed it again, and they went further down the road. So that's when my parents bought that lot because of the accessway to the rear lot, and there's two separate deeds for each lot, so that's, I don't know why they chose to go a different direction, but-
No, I understand.
But we were told that we would have to come for variance no matter what.
Back then, if you want to build?
But back then, yes, yeah.
The fact that it has an access driveway already stated that, you know what I mean? I believe that goes right back to nineteen eighty-eight, when they were devising, developing, dividing this whole thing, that they planned on that driveway being-
They planned on the road to connect to North Farms from the development, and then changed it alternately later, so.
I'm looking at your property, that's what I'm doing on the phone here. I'm looking-
Has anybody else got any questions for the applicant?
So essentially, that driveway, right now, so I pull into your property, it sits ten feet away, the driveway, the other driveway?
Which one, eight-sixty-one or eight-sixty-nine?
You're at eight-sixty-nine, there's a little, that paved road to the left of you, is that for the back lot? Or is that for eight-sixty-one?
That's for eight-sixty-one, that little one.
Okay.
Mine is right in between, so you'll see the one with the tall trees, that's eight-sixty-nine, and then that little small patch, that's eight-sixty-one. So it's thirty feet from that driveway to the trees.
Those are big trees.
What's that, Bob? Okay, anybody else? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none? Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, unless you want to ask any other questions, I'll be-
Going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the applicant request variance approval for rear lot area of forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four square feet, where sixty-two thousand five hundred square feet is required to divide the two-point-three-three acre lot at nine-eight, sixty-nine North Farms Road in an RU forty district. Parcel was a forty thousand twenty-eight square foot compliant lot in nineteen eighty-eight. In nineteen eighty-eight, North Farms Estates subdivision proposed a new lot of forty thousand square feet abutting to the rear. Rear, yeah, resubdivision of North Farms Estates nineteen ninety-one transferred sixty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven square feet of the nineteen eighty-eight subdivision land. Oh, I'm reading the wrong one, I'm sorry. It's all right, what are you going to do? Thank you. Okay. We'll go to the variance request for front yard of thirty-three, thirty-six point eighteen feet to construct a vertical addition.
Oh.
Nope, that's the wrong one, too. Variance request for rear lot area of forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four square feet to split the lot, revise the lot line, as shown on limited property boundary survey subdivision map, land of Argus Living Trust, eight-sixty-nine North Farms Road line, dated five-twelve, twenty twenty-five, and received July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Rusick.
Yes, you've been approved. Good luck.
Thank you, John.
The next variance request is twenty-five dash zero-two-five, variance request for Ojard, is that correct? Fogan, at Seventy Hill Avenue. Mr. Prentice, do you have any correspondence?
Yes, I do. Number four is twenty-five dash zero-two-five slash variance request, front yard and side yard, Ojard and Foganno at Seventy Hill Avenue. Applicant requests variance approval for a front yard of thirty-six point one-eight feet, where thirty-six point one-eight exists, and forty feet is required, and a side yard of thirteen point five-seven feet, where thirteen point five-seven feet exists, and twenty feet is required, to construct a second-story addition to the eastern property of the dwelling at Seventy Hill Avenue in an R-eighteen district. The existing home is currently a single-family ranch predating the inception of zoning. Applicant proposes no change to the existing footprint, yet the vertical addition requires variance approval to expand these non-conformities.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Fognow, Seventy Hill Avenue.
Explain your application.
So we've been in the house for ten years, and it's-
Pull the microphone close to you so we can hear you.
We've been in the house for ten years, it's only a two-bedroom, and so we want to grow our family, and so the option to build an addition over the garage will give us an extra master bedroom and another bedroom without impeding or growing the footprint, so.
Okay, yeah, so like you said, you're going to do a vertical expansion, nothing, not changing the footprint, just going straight up?
Straight up.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions for the applicant? Bob Gross?
I, I saw it, it was, looks like it's straight up and down.
Is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none? Anything further you'd like to add?
Nope.
I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chair, variance request for front yard of thirty-six point eighteen foot to construct a vertical addition at Seventy Hill Avenue as shown on existing building location survey, property of Kevin J. and Courtney Foganno, Seventy Hill Avenue dated seven-fourteen, twenty-five, and submitted plans received eight-four, twenty-five. So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, and on the second one, we have another variance request for side yard of thirteen point five-seven to construct a vertical addition at Seventy Hill Avenue as shown on existing building location survey, property of Kevin J. and Courtney Foganno, Seventy Hill Avenue dated seven-fourteen, twenty-five, and submitted plans received eight-four, twenty-five. So summary.
So we're going to do two votes here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so on the, the first one, this is for the first variance request?
Second on the, the second motion, and we'll go vote.
Ray did.
Okay, you did, I'm sorry. Okay, so the first, this is, the first vote is going to be on the front yard variance? Mr. Gross?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, approve.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Rusick?
Yes.
And then, now the motion was made and seconded for the side yard, this is for the side yard, Mr. Gross?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Rusick?
Yes. You've been approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next application, twenty-five dash zero-two-six, variance request for ABR Construction, Twenty Docker Drive. Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, you do. Number five is twenty-five dash zero-two-six, variance request, front yard, ABR Construction, Inc., Twenty Docker Drive. Applicant proposes a front yard of plus or minus thirty-two feet, where forty feet is required, and forty feet exist to expand the covered front porch by plus or minus hundred and forty-seven square feet. Parcel is located at the end of a cul-de-sac with a significant wetland boundary buffer necessitating the house be constructed in two, in two thousand sixteen at an angle to remain out of an upland review area. As such, the variance request is only relative to the southwest corner of the covered front porch, with the majority of the front porch compliant.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Bill Kremen from ABR Construction.
Paul Clark, Twenty Docker Drive.
Please explain your application.
My client would like to enclose an existing front step and turn it into a mudroom, and then add approximately a hundred and ten square feet, something like that, of deck that would be covered by a roof as well. And the corner of the roof and the deck imposes on the front yard setback.
Okay. Exactly how much do we, do, how much is going over the setback?
Square footage-wise or the distance?
Well, so just, just the corner, how much of the corner is it that we're granting a variance for? That's what I'm just curious about.
I would say it's probably about ten or twelve feet wide and a depth of maybe six or seven feet.
Okay. And this is, you're adding a mudroom and you're going to be putting a covered porch over?
Correct. There's a covered front stoop, it's like a five-by-seven concrete, you know, stoop, that we're going to just put the walls up- that we're gonna just put the walls up there so we could, uh, kick off the shoes and stuff when we come in, and then where the front garden is now, make that a little front porch so we could be out there, watch the kids in the cul-de-sac and all that stuff.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, so this house was built in two thousand and sixteen, recent, so it, it meet, it met all zoning regulations at that time, that's why it was built this way.
Correct, and it, and it had, uh, the, the, the wetlands were limiting on it to have it, have to put it where it was, and yes, it's compliant with setbacks today.
So it wasn't built elsewhere because of the wetlands, but it was put there because of this being-
It, it was compliant with both, what, the upland review area for wetlands as well as zoning regulations.
And this would make it non-compliant.
Uh, that would be, a corner of the front porch would be in the front setback by about eight feet, a corner of it.
You can, he can close in his front porch, if he, front stoop or whatever you wanna call it, you can close that in with no problem.
Yeah, the majority of it would be, is all compliant, just that one corner, 'cause it's the cul-de-sac, so as the curve of the cul-de-sac comes in, it catches that front corner.
Yeah, I saw some of the other houses in the area, a lot of them have the front porch like you do.
Yeah, there was like, uh, that circle was extended in two thousand sixteen. They built like four or five houses down on that spot.
Is there, I'm just looking at the one across the street from you, it's got the same front porch, stuff like that.
Yeah, they have the front porch, the neighbor's house has a front porch.
What's your hardship then for building this?
For the porch or for the mudroom?
Well, the mudroom, you don't need a, we, that, that wouldn't even come in front of us, 'cause that's compliant.
Right.
The porch, what's the hardship for that?
So the porch, the majority of it is compliant, right, but it can't be a half-built porch, that would just look very silly on the house, probably make the neighborhood not look so great, but, and we wanna be able to be outside, I have three young kids, an eight-year-old, two six-year-olds, that play in the circle a lot because of wetlands and everything, and they like to be able to ride their bikes and everything there. So for my wife and I to be able to sit outside and keep an eye on them and, you know, be able to enjoy like our time outside and whatnot with those guys.
I'm, I'm just asking, the right of the house, if I'm facing the house, how, are you able to build off of that side?
No, that's all, where like that, uh, fence line goes down, that's all wetlands.
Well, the fence line's here, so how far away?
The right, you're saying to the right of the garage? If you're looking at the-
Oh, wait, wait a second, I was looking at the, the house across the street there, yes. Yeah, 'cause they're all, they look a lot alike.
Yeah, they're almost the same color, too.
Yeah, they, they, the design's almost the same, correct, yes, the garage is on the right-hand side. So, yeah, let me, so I can see that one better now. So how, yeah, I mean, your garage, so there's a fence there. But that fence goes across the front of your property. Does it go down the side also?
It goes down the, the sideline of it, too. That had like the, the wetland plaques on it, when like they, I built the neighborhood, they put that up. DeGennaro Construction had did it.
Just, I don't know.
All set?
Yeah.
Has anybody else got any questions for the applicant? Is anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing seeing none, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No.
All set?
So?
Yeah.
Gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, applicant proposes a front yard of plus or minus thirty-two feet, where forty feet is, uh, I'm sorry. Um, we both did it. Uh, variance request a front yard, plus or minus thirty-two feet to construct a covered front porch at Twenty Docker Drive, as shown on a built-up plan for lot number four, Millwood Place, Twenty Docker Drive dated November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, and submitted plans received August seventh, twenty twenty-five. So be.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Rice, I mean, excuse me. Mr. Wolfher.
It's catchy.
It is catchy, Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes, you've been approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, uh, variance request is twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, variance request for Three Seventy-four NCR LLC, Three Seventy-four North Colony Road, Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. Number six is twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, variance request, side yard, Three Seventy-four NCR comma LLC, Three Seventy-four North Colony Street. Applicant seeks side yard of two feet, where two feet exists, to expand an existing garage to construct a two-story residential dwelling unit at Three Seventy-four North Colony Road in a CB dash forty district. Parcel consists of two buildings, one multi-unit residential slash commercial building, and a four-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot, single-story residential building. Request, request pertains to the existing four-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot residential structure. This existing structure is currently located two feet from the southwest side boundary. The side boundary is, is in common with an existing cemetery with no structures and is bounded by the railroad to the rear. Applicant proposes to expand the structure to the rear of the property as well as adding a vertical addition. Expansion of this legal, non-conforming structure requires variance approval before proceeding to planning and zoning for the site plan approval per section six-point-three-eight middle housing of the zoning regulations.
Thank you, welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Valerie Votto, I am counsel for Three Seventy-four. I, I am counsel, so I live in Guilford, Connecticut, so.
Okay, and yours?
Uh, my name is Jerome Schopo, I live in North Branford, Connecticut, but I am, uh, representing, um, the construction company of Three Seventy-four North Colony Street.
Okay, welcome to you. Please explain the application in front of us.
Uh, the application before you is really to expand an existing structure fourfold, which will allow us to now take advantage of a use that heretofore would not have been available to us in, um, in this zone, which is to allow for some middle housing. At this juncture, as it was stated in the application, we can't move forward with anything or explore any of the, that's a, or explore any potential units without first being able, uh, to utilize what we will call the existing southwest corner and then expanding it along the cemetery.
Okay, so your, your plans are to, that little building that's there on the property, right along the cemetery? Your plans are to knock down three of the walls, or what, what's your plan?
We're pretty much gonna, it's, it's in pretty bad shape, it's gonna pretty much have to all come down, we just really wanna be able to place the corner.
You wanna keep that line then?
We just wanna, we just wanna be able to place the corner of the much larger structure exactly where this one is, that southwest corner.
All right, so you just wanna be able to keep that two-foot where that one is now?
Exactly, and expand it a hundred-and-sixty feet along the cemetery.
Okay, uh, one second, Amy. Please give us an overview of how this is gonna work with the new zoning that we are dealing with.
I'll give you an overview, but I'm gonna make a bargain, because you can't go down that path. You were there for the structure, but we have new middle housing regulations that allow folks to develop multiple units in certain zones, provided they have the ample area and they could comply with their setbacks and such. This property does not already. So they are only seeking the structure to be located where there already is one, just be longer and taller, and then they'll, they will proceed by site plan approval, it's not discretionary for our new middle housing regulations, which is to encourage some more affordable housing units in the proper areas, near the railroad ideally, which this is. Yeah, but that will go through the Planning and Zoning Commission upon your determination for a variance.
Okay, so, like you said, we're not here to discuss the size of the building or anything else, we're just here to discuss the two feet.
The structure and, and if it's applicable there, because the, the middle housing would not apply if they were compliant, you would have no say in it. So we, we're not looking at the use. We're looking at simply the structure and whether it's appropriate.
How many feet off the fence would they have to be to be compliant?
Have, what's our side yard, what would be our side yard? We're supposed to be twenty. This lot is only fifty feet wide, so if I had to respect a twenty-foot wide setback on each side, I would have a ten-foot alley down the middle, down the middle of the lot. If you know on the map that was provided, or the plan that was provided, by the time we get to the end of the one-sixty, we are twenty feet off the opposite setback. So the structure, the structure can be compliant on one side.
So if you can be compliant in the back, can you move most of the building to the back to be compliant then?
Uh, no.
It would, would not be able to be compliant, the, the lot width is only fifty feet. If you had to meet twenty feet on either side.
Twenty feet on either side, never mind, I forgot about that part.
It's a very, very narrow lot, narrow and deep.
And so we don't care that if they're building a hundred feet, three hundred feet, that's not us? We don't care, it's just-
That's, you're determining whether the structure is appropriate to be two feet off the boundary, however large it may be, but not the use of it.
I mean, one thing I think we all should take in account, it's beside a cemetery, so it's not like, you know, an old cemetery, too, I don't think anybody gets buried there anymore, but I'm just saying, it's not like we're being, allowing, right next to another building that's, you know, ten or fifteen feet from the, from the, from that property line on theirs.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with cemeteries, so I just wanna say that, but it is-
No, but I'm just saying, that's-
Cemeteries are sacred ground and people, I'm sure there are people that still go there and visit people.
Right, no, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, I'm just-
Might not be active in burials, that's Holy Trinity's, right?
Yeah, yeah, but that's the old, I don't think anybody gets buried there anymore, yeah. So, but, just something to, has anybody else got any questions for the applicant? You all set, Bob? Okay, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing seeing none, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, at this juncture, would you like me to state the hardship, if you need me to?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of did in the way, which is a strict application of the zoning regulations to this lot at this time. It's impossible to comply with, due to the fact that you would have a ten-foot alley in the middle, twenty-foot on each side, make it impossible.
Okay. Thank you. Close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve variance request for side yard of two feet to construct a multi-unit dwelling at Three Seventy-four North Colony Street, as shown on limited zoning location survey, Three Seventy-four North Colony Road. Prepared for Three Seventy-four NCR LLC dated nine-twenty-one-twenty, not yet, nine-twenty-one-twenty-one, and submitted plans received eight-eleven, two thousand twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
No to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes, your variance request has been approved, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, next, special exception request, twenty-five dash zero-two-eight, special request for Carrera, Thirteen-sixty-three Durham Road, Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. Number seven is twenty-five dash zero-twenty-eight, special exception request, garage area, Carrera slash Thirteen-sixty-three Durham Road. Application is for special exception for total garage area of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet, where maximum one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty square feet is permitted as of right. Nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet exist and five-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet, two-car detached garage is proposed at Thirteen-sixty-three Durham Road in an RU-eighty district. Applicant seeks less than three-hundred square feet of additional garage area. Parcel is plus or minus twelve-point-nine acres, with proposed detached garage located compliantly on the property and of compliant height.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, hi.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Lisa Carrera, Thirteen-sixty-three Durham Road.
So, give us an explanation, what are you doing here?
I would like to add a two-car detached garage, one to put an additional car in that we plan to purchase. And the other bay, I recently retired, and, um, it's sort of a play space for me. I've, I, I do a lot of things at the house, in the yard, building things, all kinds of stuff, so it's sort of a little workshop and just an area for me to, uh, have my own space to get things done. Part of the plan would include a loft to be finished in the future, and most likely that will include an office, it's, it's just for an office space. And that's even if we even build it out, we're not even a hundred percent sure, but we wanna build it out, 'cause I have an office in the house right now.
Okay.
So, that's-
We have a picture of it right here, right? This is what it's gonna look like?
That's sort, that's what, yeah, something very similar to that is what I wanna build.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Looks nice. So, um, you're gonna just be cars, no commercial use?
No commercial use.
Just for storage of vehicles?
Storage of a vehicle and play space for me.
Okay. When I built my garage, I built a loft, and it's full of stuff now.
I have a basement that is not finished, I've got, I don't need any more stuff.
So anyways, uh, Mr. Gross, do you have a question?
So, um, this is in addition to the three-car garage you have so far?
Yes.
But you did mention that you want to possibly make office space out of it? Is this gonna be heated garage, or?
Heated, yes.
So it won't be for living, though?
No.
No water or anything like that?
No, no water, no plumbing. We're looking at putting a mini-split out there, so that the office, it's really because of the office space that we, if we intend to build it, plus, it's hot, cold, if I'm gonna be doing stuff out in the garage, I want it heated.
But it's not gonna be living, living space, is it?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
'Cause you're on a big piece of land out there.
Yes, uh, my subject can't handle another bedroom. I, I know that.
Okay, no, I wasn't, that's not us, anyway, that's not us.
No, no, I know that, but, living space would require that.
Right, but I just had to ask the question.
Yes.
Anybody else?
'Cause you, you mentioned, you're making it to office. 'Cause you mentioned you were making it to office, that's why.
Yep. May, maybe.
Right, maybe, you brought it up, not me.
Yes.
Don't make it empty, it gets full of stuff, they're telling you. Anyways, anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing seeing none, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Um, no.
Okay, gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, special exception request for a total garage area of sixteen-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet to construct a six-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet detached garage at Thirteen-sixty-three Durham Road, as shown on limited property boundary survey, zoning location survey. Proposed garage land of Lisa Carrera and Suzanne Bouquet, Thirteen-sixty-three Durham Road, and submitted plans received August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and subject to comments from the Health Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yep. All right, uh, next, special exception request, twenty-five dash zero-three-zero for CT Proton Therapy Center LLC, nine-thirty-two Northrup Road. Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. Number eight, twenty-five dash zero-three-zero, special exception request signage, Connecticut Proton Therapy Center LLC, nine-thirty-two Northrup Road. Applicant seeks total sign are of eighty-five-point-eight-seven square feet, where sixty-four square foot max is permitted as of right to allow two new ground signs and one new wall sign at nine-thirty-two Northrup Road in a W-one district. Applicant seeks added twenty square feet of sign area for new proton therapy facility where no signage currently exists. New sign regulations adopted six-thirteen-twenty-five allow additional signage by special exception application as a- as it should be permitted on a case-by-case basis relative to the total requests and particular parcel rather than requiring variance approval as per history. This office has no objection for this minimal sign allowance increase request at this particular location.
Thank you. We also have a letter, there's a couple of them here, hold on. Where to go? Oh, there's one dated August 15, and then another one dated September 11, both from Attorney Lachlan. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jim Lachlan, an attorney here in town. My office is on North Main Street. With me is Pete Carboni, Carboni with Proton International. This is an application for signs out at the new cancer treatment center. You see the construction coming along. It's late. Thank you for your time. I put my thoughts down in a letter. So just briefly, I think this application is interesting because it's a special exception application now. No hardship is necessary. The new regulation allows you as a special exception just to check out the area and decide if you think the sign is appropriate for the area. That's why I put some numbers in my second letter to let you know what the neighbors have out there, and we're in keeping with this. As of right is 64 feet, we're asking for only 21 feet more. We're not being piggy here. And then I also think it's interesting because we're making history. They'll read about us for years to come because of what we're doing tonight, and I really look forward to your approval.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions. So we're going to put a ground sign at the entrance?
Correct.
Then there's going to be, from what I'm seeing here, there's going to be a sign on the front of the building, is that?
Facing 91, it'll be a wall sign.
Well, on the back, right? Or is that the, is the back, the 91 is going to be the front, or where's, how's the building? Go ahead.
So the wall sign that you're looking at would be facing I-91?
Could you give your name?
Sure.
Pete Carboni. Thank you.
Proton International.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the sign that, that you see, the wall sign, is facing I-91, which is considered the side of the building?
Okay. And then you got the one out by the road, the one on the wall, and there's another one, right?
There's a small monument right in front of the building to help people as they come up the driveway know where to park and where the main entrance is.
Okay. Very good. Very nice. Looks good to me. Anybody got any questions?
Just a clarification, so you're going to put a sign on the east side of the building? That's where you're, on the side facing 91?
Correct.
And then on Northrup? And those are the two signs, or are you putting a third?
The one on Northrup would be a monument sign right at where, you know, where you enter the driveway.
Right. And that's it.
And there'll be, there'll be one, what they said was one up the driveway which will point parking here and entrance here. So it gives you some direction where to go.
That's a small sign, then. That'll be a small sign.
About six foot tall, yeah.
I'm looking at your building. It's under, it is under construction. I was there today. I assume, they says I'm being filmed, so I assumed they saw me when I was there. And so I didn't walk too far into the property. But I figured if they wanted me to stop, they would have come out and stopped me.
No, they want you to see it. It looks pretty cool.
Well, I didn't get to see inside, so. I'm sure inside is where the cool stuff is.
Right.
Not outside. All right, thank you.
You too, Bob. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Doesn't look like a big deal to me.
Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Thank you, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, going to close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Chairman, special exception request for total sign area of 85.87 square feet and two ground signs at 932 Northrup Road as shown on plans submitted August 15, 2025, and copy of landscape plan, site plan of Connecticut Proton Therapy Center outpatient facility received August 15, 2025. So, so move.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Wolfher.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Prentice.
Yes to approve.
Mr. Rice.
Yes to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes to approve.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for doing it in Wallingford. Appreciate that.
You go. Good job.
Okay, next special exception request, 25-031. Special exception request for Carrie at 25 Fair Street. Mr. Prentice, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. Number nine is 25-031. Special exception request, child daycare Carrie slash 25 Fair Street. Applicant seeks special exception approval to operate a child daycare facility with expected enrollment of 20 at 25 Fair Street in a CLB district. Property was formerly a medical office with identified off-street parking. Special exception approval serves as change of use zoning approval. Fair Street is also a one-way road, naturally limiting the number of vehicles and any through traffic, which will enhance safe drop-off and pickup capability.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Carissa Carrie. My address is 375 Ward Street.
Okay. Give us an explanation of what you want to do here.
So I've had a behavioral health company that I've run in home for the past two years. We have a good-sized client population now, and I'm looking to finally expand into a physical location. I found the address on Fair Street, and it really kind of fits the needs of our preschool. So it would be a preschool location servicing kids three to five years old. It's inclusive, so it would include children who have an autism diagnosis and typical children who don't. I specialize in social, emotional learning and behavioral therapy for kids with challenging behavior. And so it will be a small program with intensive therapy model. And this setting is, is perfect. It's close to my home, so I'm hoping that we'll get the approval.
So first question, hours of operation?
So it'll be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Number, you're saying 20?
Up to 20, yes.
Up to 20.
Mm-hmm.
I got to be honest with you, my reservation isn't about what you do, it's about the drop-off and pickup because I, that was my doctor's office, Dr. Wine's office. And to be honest, parking was, you know, at a premium there, you know what I mean? So I am, that's my concern with this application.
Sure. So luckily, we'll only have up to four staff in the building at a time, so we do have...
How many staff?
Four.
Four.
So we do have off-street parking for staff. And then I'm also in talks with both my landlord, who shares the parking lot right next door to us, and then one of the other abutting neighbors for some additional parking from their parking lots. We're talking through agreements now. And in terms of drop-off and pickup, there wouldn't be a set time that all of the children would arrive and all of the children would leave, so it would be scattered.
Maybe staggered.
Staggered, exactly. So I don't think that it would be much of an issue. There's also street parking there, and the, you know, walkway from the street to the door is quite short, and we have it kind of surrounded by foliage to kind of a straight line for the kids to go in. And so with that stagger, drop-off and pickup, I don't see it, you know, interfering too much with the neighborhood.
Okay. So you're saying you're, the landlord owns that, the, put the business on the corner?
Yes.
So the lot that they have?
Abuts right next to the property, so...
Right, so have you had any discussion with that?
Yes, so he is talking, he doesn't own that building alone. He owns some other properties alone, but that building he owns in conjunction with other people. So he's speaking with them about allotting two spots for drop-off and pickup, which will be right near our front entrance. And then in addition to that, the neighbor on the other side of him, abuts right to the back of our property, and they have a parking lot that's not in use, it's Gallagher Travel. He's been in talks with the Roz Gallagher there about renting out parking from her as well, so that we could accommodate any additional parking needs we would have.
Right. I mean, in that sense, just a suggestion would be to have your employees park over there, and then you would have your lot for pickup and drop-off, even though that driveway is very narrow. So like I said, that's, that's my reservation. I, I'm, you know, happy for you to, looking to expand your business, but I'm just concerned about that street. Very narrow, and, you know, I really, to be honest with you, I haven't, like, staked it out to see if people are parking in front, if, or if that, you know, that side of the street, because there's, other than the apartments across the street, there's really no other business except for the Maguires on the, on the corner, right?
Right, so Jack Maguire is actually my landlord.
Yeah.
And I actually grew up on Fair Street, and so I'm pretty familiar with that road especially, and that beginning part that's mostly commercial and just has like pretty sparse property tends to be pretty empty, especially because Maguire uses that parking lot. So any of their traffic doesn't park on the street, so there tends to be a lot of openings in the beginning there, and the apartment across the way has their own parking. On the corner, the music school has their own parking lot, so there really isn't a ton of backup on the, the beginning of the street in terms of parking, and it's a little bit separated from the residential part that's further down.
Right. I mean, one, one plus, could be a plus is the one way, but the other negative is people use it to cut from Center Street to go south.
Right.
Mr. Gross, I know you're itching over here.
Well, I'm not itching. I feel bad because I like what you're doing and all this kind of stuff, and I've had issues with other daycares with parking, and this one, I was there today. I mean, I, it would be great if you could come back to us, I don't know how this works, and talk to the police about cutting off those, because in front of your building, there were two cars there today. So right in front of your building, what, what would be the entrance and exit for the children?
The front door.
Okay, because there's parking not that far away that are not your cars that are there, and if there was a no-standing area there. And when I was there today, all the cars, there's bushes there that would separate your property from Jack's other property there, Mr. Maguire's, and that, there was, it was full. There wasn't an open space there. And I was there at 4:45 today. And at 5, and I was there for a few minutes, I walked around, mortgage companies to your left there, and then some of the people were coming out of Farrell's office at that point. So the lot was starting to become active at that point, and if you're using that lot for your children, drop-offs, they have cars coming in and out. My, I think it's great. My concern is the safety of the children, and that's what I'm thinking of, because you're very close to the road there also.
Right.
And if you have 20, I mean, I know you're going to stagger the times.
Oh, really?
I don't know if, if, if they could get better parking rules to us first accommodations, because this, I can't, I would not be able to prove this based on what the parking situation is, and that's, that's the whole thing. I mean, I think it's great, I, you're a small business owner, I'd love to see you thrive in Wallingford and all that type of stuff, but it's just the safety here with the kids. I mean, can she come back and talk to the police and Jack Maguire and get something in writing that showed to us that she has a safe drop-off for the children?
You just said the key words. First of all, she just doesn't need to come back to you. But if you have certain conditions under which you would agree to this, such as entering into a parking, a formal parking arrangement with the abutting property, you can condition any approval accordingly. If you, you just, that, that's an option for you to say, I would approve it with the condition that there were three spaces provided in an agreement, you know, from an abutting property, whatever the case may be.
One of them would be the town, though. I mean, right in front of her place, there's parking spots, and that to me is...
You can't, you can't condition anything on town property or public roads.
Right, so we would have to, if we're gonna...
You could restrict hours, you can ask for a park, you know, a certain formal arrangement for excess parking, you can, you would make conditions accordingly, how you're comfortable with this. She, rather than having her return to show you that.
Yeah.
So, you know, that would be the means to do that.
So let me ask you this, before we start discussing this amongst ourselves, what we're okay with, because again, I'm okay with, again, what, that's probably a perfect building for you, once you, you know, do whatever construction inside to make it fit. But would you be okay if we conditioned this with, I don't know, four parking spaces?
You're going to need more than that.
Well, but she's got, but she's got her rear lot there, too.
Rear lot's not a drop-off lot, though.
No.
You need a drop-off area for the children that's safe. You can't drop them off in that rear lot because of the way the driveway is and people moving in and out. It wouldn't, it wouldn't work. That lot wouldn't work for kids. It's tougher to, I would assume it's even tougher adults on that side lot there. And then they'd have to go all the way around to the front of the building to get into it, where in the side lot, 370, I think that's 375 Center Street, that lot, at least if he makes a pathway through the bushes there, or to the sidewalk in front of the building then up, because there's bushes there.
Yeah.
So that, you're going to have to do something with that, because you can't have the kids cutting through the bushes.
How many, how many spots were you in negotiations for?
So with Jack, it was two spots, just for pickup, drop-off, not parking during the day. And then with Roz, she has kind of a whole back parking lot that's not in use, and so we had just start, just to see if she was open to it, she said she would be interested, but she wanted to talk through the logistics. Would it be possible to use the lot of the building specifically for drop-off and pickup and have staff parking elsewhere?
You just suggested what I was going to suggest, where you could designate those parking spaces where there's, you know, an entrance and, you know, an egress problem for children as employee parking.
Is there an entrance, there is an entrance in the back of that, right?
There is, yes. There's an entrance in the back. So what we could do, the way the property's set up, is there's that main entrance that I'm sure you've gone through with your doctor, and then there's a backside door. So it's towards the back of the building, but it is on the side where the parking lot is. If I designate that entire side parking lot that runs along the side of the building to parent pick up and drop off, the children could even enter through that back door, or they could, there's a, a bit of a front lawn there, if there were a pathway that went right from the driveway, cut through the front lawn to the front door instead of the children having to go on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so what we all have to remember is not every parent, there might be an open spot in front where they'd be able to just come in the front door, because that is public parking, right? There's some parents, huh?
On the street.
On, on Fair, on Fair Street.
Fair Street is, is public parking, right?
So I mean, you know, at 7 o'clock in the morning, I doubt very much, or even 8 o'clock, there's that many cars parked on the street there. Probably not till 9, if there is, you were there today?
Yeah, but there's a lot of residential in that area, too.
But, but not down on that end, that's further down. Across the street is the apartments.
Right, but then the house next to her is a multifamily.
But they have a, but that's the one, you're the next house south, correct?
Yeah, that's south of her.
Right, but that's, they have a big driveway there with park, with rare parking.
All of the properties around there do have their own lots.
Yeah, that's the mortgage company, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, with, the further you get down, yes, the parking gets, I agree, the parking gets harder, but now that most of the doctor's offices and everything are gone from Fair Street, I don't know. I, I'm okay with putting in some sort of parking spot from, that she could get, or even on her property. I mean, I gotta be, just my feelings, I don't think she wants anything to happen to the kids.
No, nobody wants anything.
No, I know, I know. I'm, no, I'm just saying, so what she plans, if she uses, what I was getting at is if she uses her rear lot, I imagine she's gonna wanna set something up safely for the kids to come in the rear. So you could do both. She could have the front entrance. You're gonna have enough staff to man both front and back door?
Yes, so the preschool, we're actually gonna have additional staff. Preschool ratio are, are one adult to ten children, but because we're providing behavioral therapy, some of our funding comes through insurance. So with those insurance, some of our kids are gonna actually have one-to-one staff as well. So our staffing ratios are gonna be higher than it would be in a typical preschool, so we will have more adults.
Okay.
How many?
Up to four at a time, because the behavioral sessions wouldn't be happening all at the same time. And in addition to that, some of them can do group therapy, so in, we use group insurance codes.
Can we recommend or ask for bollards on the, to the left of her building to give a safe, safe walkway? Because the driveway goes right to the building. There's no, there's no buffer there. Goes right to the building, the driveway.
Right, well, I, I think, I think if the parents are gonna use the driveway, the entrance is gonna be in the rear, right?
So, yes, and the rear entrance will be inside of a fence as well. So, so the back area, the back, very back portion will be fenced in, and the fence will go around the door and out into the play area. So that back door will be fenced in, so the parents would have to get the child in through the gate and then in a door.
You're, you just brought up another thing. So in this backyard, you're gonna set up a play area on the, on the asphalt?
Yeah, so how many spots will you have once you do that in the back?
So we would, the whole side of the building, I, I tested the other day with my car. We could have at least four spots just on the side of the building, and then the back would be set for a play area, but the, the back entrance is on the side of the building, not directly in the back.
You're saying four cars, you would double them up, then, it'd be left, right, left, right?
On a slant.
On a slant.
Yeah.
So they'd be backing out of the driveway?
They wouldn't have to.
How would they turn around if you, if you're taken away from the top?
So there's enough room to and then go out straight.
There's enough room to turn, turn around at the top up here?
Not at the top, but to back out of the parking spot.
Well, I said you can back out.
And then exit, yeah, straight.
You're, you really, you're saying if there's two cars, four cars parked on the side, you'll be able to flip a car around and have it go forward out, or it'll have to back out?
Yeah, I believe so. No, I believe they'd be able to flip and go about forward. And I don't, I wouldn't plan for there to be four cars at a time necessarily. I would be looking for ideally two drop-off spots and pickup spots at a time. Because we're gonna have the staggered start and end times.
That's, so that's, that's Gallagher's.
That's the parking lot. This is gonna become
There's one, two, three, four, four.
But this is parking. This is gonna be playground.
Get those four, and then what she's got on the side over there.
Oh, that, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's the, that's the brush, bushes. That's, that she has to, to me, that's what she would have to get.
Right, these four spots.
Yeah, the side of the building doesn't work.
No, I agree with you. I'm, I'm not so sure that the side, and then possible for it. So I think what, you, you okay with what I just showed him?
Yeah, I saw it.
I can go for it, but that's better.
I think what we've all come up with to try and help you with this is that there's four parking spaces in the Maguires lot that are nosed up to your building. If you could get those spots, plus whatever else you do with your driveway, we would be okay with that, right?
The, to me, the Maguire property would have to be, should be the drop-off area. Her staff and so forth would be to the left.
Well, or, or parking in Gallagher's, if she got that, too.
Or the staff in Gallagher's. But yeah, that, the staff can park anywhere. It's the question of how you're gonna get those kids out of their cars and back to their cars.
But you would be okay with the four spots?
I'm not okay with it. I would like a better scenario, but it's probably the best scenario that she could probably get in this situation.
Along with whatever alongside the
Because she's gotta do something, she gotta move, he's gotta agree to clear some of those bushes out. You can't have kids walking in bushes, because then it becomes a blind spot for a car with a kid with a bush.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean
I was there today. I mean, I, when I walked through the bushes there to go to the property, I thought about that, if a kid decides to dart out, the bushes are gonna, if it's a three-year-old, kids, this, well, you know how tall a three-year-old is. And you're not gonna see them.
If I may make a point of order. First of all, you cannot make a condition on somebody else's property. What you can do, for example, if you're contemplating entering into a parking agreement off-site for staff, is, what you would do is make a condition that restricts the onsite parking to drop-off, pickup only. And then the second condition was find alternate formal parking arrangements. You, but you can't condition somebody else's property for staff. But you could restrict the parking onsite to be only for drop-off and pickup.
But she could, she could come back to us and say, Mr. Maguire has agreed to, give me these four spots. And to me, that would make it palatable.
But you would need to condition that she find an alternate parking arrangement. She doesn't need to come back with that formal thing. You're conditioning the approval on having an arrangement.
We can't condition it on a, on a lot that doesn't, that's not belonging to her.
Correct, but you could restrict the nature of the parking on this site. And staff, we would have to have a formal agreement to have staff park elsewhere. That's what you're asking for is her to, you're saying, I'm approving it, but yeah, based on you getting an arrangement to have your staff park elsewhere.
And that's not my concern, is the staff. It's where she's going, not you, but where your, her students or her, the children.
That would restrict the site to only drop-off and pick, I'm just suggesting as a comfort, that's how you do it.
But that left side is a tough area in my
You cannot have her come with an agreement for drop-off and pickups at an alternate site, period.
She couldn't come in the future.
You can't do that. You're asking to go across parcels.
I'm not saying
But what you can do is say, we wanna restrict the parking to this, X or Y.
But it belongs to Mr. Maguire, so he could make, he could make, because it's part of his parcel. So if she
It's not part of his parcel. It's another parcel that belongs to him. Two different parcels.
Which abuts the property, so he
You were here for a special exception at twenty-five Fair Street. You're not here for three seventy-five Center Street.
She could come back with that appro
You can't come back with that. You are here to evaluate
Today
It's Fair Street.
Right.
Correct. She could make, if she wanted to make a different application at a different site or a combined site.
That's what I'm saying. She could do that in the future. She could come back with a combined for three seventy-five and
Or you, or you can condition it to your comfort level relative to this site.
Take a vote.
That's all, you, you can make any condition relative to this site, so that would make it work.
Just twenty-five Fair Street.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? I think we've discussed this enough. I mean, I think, I think she understands our willingness to help. We're just very concerned about the, the drop-off and pickup, which I imagine you are, too. I'm not saying you're not. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against it? Hearing, seeing none? Anybody got any further questions, or how are we going to, are we gonna? You're gonna
Oh, you're gonna write the condition?
On-site parking for drop-off and pickup only. Well, that's all we can do. Yeah, because the rest of it, she's, we're, we're going on to another piece of property, so she, at that point, she's gonna have to find parking for her staff in another area. Okay, everybody understand that?
I understand that.
Do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing and open up for discussion and possible action by the board.
Mr. Chairman, special exception request for childcare facility with enrollment of twenty at twenty-five Fair Street as shown on submitted plans dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, subject to onsite, onsite parking for drop-off and pickup only. So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Gross.
You know my position. I'm sorry, but no.
Uh, Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, to approve.
And Chairman Russick.
Yes, to approve. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Hope everything works out.
Thank you.
Congratulations for what you do with those people also.
Thank you. I appreciate it, gentlemen. Nice meeting you all.
Mr. Wolfher, anything going on with our
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I was in my office over the weekend, and I was looking for material to read, and I did not have the minutes of the meeting. I tested, I sent an email to Amy, and she sent it right out to all of us.
And okay, then did you re, then, then did you review it?
I, I certainly did, and there are no errors, so it should be submitted as presented.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Mr. Wolfher.
Yes, to approve.
Do I got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Nice meeting you guys.